Welcome to Soundside and welcome to KUOW's District Dash. I'm Libby Dankman alongside KUOW politics reporter David Hyde. Seven Seattle City Council races will be decided this November, and we've invited all of the council candidates to answer the questions voters most want addressed. But we know you're busy, so we're going to do this in 30 minutes. That's why we call it a dash. It does go fast. If a candidate goes overtime for an answer, you're going to hear this. Or maybe this. That ferry captain is actually our boss and they like us to stay on time. So thank you to the candidates for keeping to the clock. Today, we are headed to District Five, which will soon stretch from Lake City to Crown Hill, including Northgate, Maple Leaf, Bitter Lake, Greenwood, Broadview, and Pinehurst. Welcome to the candidates vying to represent District Five, social equity consultant Kristiana Obi Sumner. Welcome to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
And retired Judge Kathy Moore, thank you so much for coming in today.
Thank you for having me.
So thank you to everybody who showed up to the debate and to our candidates, and let's get to the first questions.
All right. Our first question today is going to be about policing. And let's start with Kristiana Obi Sumner. To kick it off, I want to give you just a chance to talk a little bit about your professional and life experiences and how that background informs your views about what the city needs to do next when it comes to policing.
Sure. So a little bit about me, this is the seventh state I've lived in. I was able to come to Seattle after getting a scholarship to Seattle University. Before then, I talk about how I grew up in Camden County, New Jersey, and they, before 2020, was able, was considered the murder capital of the world. And I lived there. And so when they sort of, they're able to put some new processes in place with their police department, they actually, it did lead to an increase of police, but it also led them from going to being the top 10 most dangerous city in the country to having a 70-80% reduction. I truly believe that it's important to respect all of our civic service members, and I'm really worried about the fact that we've put so much reliance on our police department. We have a lot of amazing nonprofits and organizations that can help to share that load. And I would love to be able to address some of that in concert with them and our other community members.
Okay, Kathy Moore, same question, your professional and life experiences? Insofar as you want to talk about how that background informs your view about the future of policing?
Great. Thank you very much. So I started out my legal career as a public defender and made that decision to become a public defender and not a corporate attorney. And I really saw that the criminal legal system can often be just a system that is grinding people through and is not necessarily rendering justice. At the same time, I became the Chair of Seattle Human Rights Commission. And during that time, we worked on police accountability, which we still do not have, and it's absolutely critical piece to the next police contract. And then I ultimately became a judge at King County Superior Court, where I was in the position of actually having to sentence people and looking at alternatives to sentencing. So my experience is that the criminal legal system does provide a tool. It is something that we utilize. It's something that I think we need to utilize sparingly and thoughtfully, and we certainly need to have police that are accountable. At the same time, we need to be looking at alternatives that we can utilize through the third public safety department.
And Kathy Moore, staying with you, just a 30-second follow-up. KUW asked all the candidates about their views about the future of police spending. You said that spending should be about the same as it is today. Why about the same?
Well, I think, you know, the council did talk about defunding the police in 2020, and ultimately, they didn't really make that many cuts in the budget. They have budgeted enough for an additional 300 to 400 officers. That's what SPD is telling us they need in terms to be able to actually do the job of responding to Priority One violence calls. So I don't think we need to overinflate the budget, but we definitely need to have the budget that's necessary.
And Kristiana Obi Sumner, same question to you. We asked all the candidates this. You said significantly less spending on Seattle police in future budgets. Why significantly less spending?
Well, as I said, as a consultant, really an organizational development consultant, and if I see a team or department that is working out of purview, they are saying they're working out of purview, they were giving them, you know, they have a budget, they're saying, hey, we're working on a scope, we'll do it, but we need more money. I feel like, well, why not help to reduce that bandwidth? Have them focus on those Priority One calls, but then reallocate that purview and the average cost of them responding to that to others. So it's not a hack slash, but I think it's important to see where that turns out at the end of the day.
Kathy Moore, 911 response times are a major concern in your district, your, the district you would like to represent. Police recruitment is possibly a long-term solution for that, but as we have discussed, there's this hiring crisis across the country. Seattle is trying to hire more officers, but that will take a while. Beyond adding uniformed officers, how would you reduce 911 response times in District Five?
Well, I don't think we can reduce 911 response times without additional police. We also need to have two police precincts in District Five because it's a huge geographic area. I do agree with Kristiana, though, that we need to be looking at upscaling our behavioral health crisis responders. We need to be looking at additional social workers. One thing that I've proposed is upscaling and expanding community service officers in every neighborhood who are civilians, who can do the kind of keeping an eye on the neighbors, doing outreach, connecting people with services. So, and then we need to look at other community groups and ways that we can alter the environment by changing lighting, changing, you know, lighting alleyways, looking, educating people about how to be safe, how to create safe spaces for themselves in their work environments, excuse me. So I think that there are certainly alternatives, but we have to continue to recruit police officers and actively do so.
Kristiana Obi Sumner, same question. As a city council member, how would you reduce 911 response times?
Yeah, one of the things that's really interesting is when you read the police enforcement research foundations, sort of cycle of research, they check into over a couple hundred police departments across the country. They say that the number, the top three reasons for why there has been recruitment and retention issues with police is because of work-life balance, because of well-being, and because of burnout. And that burnout, yes, is sociopolitical, but it's also because of just the nature of it. I think it's really important when we look at places like Lead, if we look at where King County has been putting out these community services, how we can sort of make sure that if I need the police to show up because there's an active situation, I want them to be focused on those places where we need them to show up. If there's somewhere where an organization is already able to take that on, but they're working on a shoestring budget, if we can expand that scope, it's going to not just, I believe, help to reduce the response times, but I think also help to increase the well-being of all of our public servants.
May I respond to that?
Kathy Moore, yeah, we're going to have 30 seconds. I do want to ask you, though, because, again, cities across the country have had these recruitment problems. You're really focused on adding those officers, but Seattle Police is only, you know, bringing in a dozen or more per year. What's the secret sauce that you would bring to recruit more officers?
So I think there are a number of things. One is that we need to, we need to pass a contract. Getting a contract entered is a signal to the police department that we value them as employees. The contract is up for renewal in 2024. It's being negotiated right now. So we need to get that contract in place. As part of that contract, we need to have very, very robust accountability measures. Once those robust accountability measures are in place, we can then talk about perhaps acknowledging that defunding the police narrative was not correct and that it resulted and it became very problematic. We also need to continue to look at before the badge program. We need to start an apprenticeship program.
That's that seagull coming in. Kristiana, I just want you to respond because we heard Kathy Moore say the defund narrative was not correct. You have talked about repurposing some of the police budget in order to go towards public safety alternatives. Can you talk about what your position would be in terms of the police department and repurposing those funds? Would it, as Kathy Moore says, be a negative message to policing and potentially impact recruitment?
I think that what's really important to go to that is it's going to take having those multiple pathways toward shared goals. I don't think we should hack slash any budget. No offense to the folks out there who marched, right? But I, that's not where I'm about, right? I'm looking at this solely from, you know, from the perspective of someone who does organizational development consulting. It's a team or it's a department that's overburdened, and you would create a whole new team or department, or you would send those resources to another team or department, but you don't just arbitrarily hack slash. You just see what the average cost of that is. So I would want to work with the police department, our community, and everyone to see what is going to be best for that outcome.
Great. Kristiana, staying with you, you told KUW you would have voted against the new city drug ordinance. This is the one that would make use and possession prosecutable under city law. The law says it's focused on trying to get people help with addiction, but also protecting the public, like if somebody's smoking fentanyl at a bus stop, that sort of thing. Why opposed?
Well, I, I come from a family that was in street economy. I'm the first person I found to go to this college. And so I, not only do we have the empirical and statistical data about how this sort of carceral approach to helping to reduce drug use doesn't work, but I've also experienced that directly. I had been a direct social service worker before coming here, and two of those places were D E S C and Harborview. I have worked with this population directly and continue to have colleagues in this field and consult with them. The professionals in the field of direct social service, behavioral health services, psychiatric services say that a carceral approach is not going to lead to a reduction in drug use and is going to even lead to recidivism and increased trauma. Being able to have things like overdose prevention sites, increased social workers that are able to do outreach, and an opportunity for those upstream taproot solutions, like the fact that they don't have the housing to go to, that's going to be what's going to help us not have folks outside.
Kathy Moore, same topic. You told KUW you support the new city drug law. As you probably know, critics say it's a lot of smoke and mirrors, that it's designed to make the public think the city's taking action, but it's not clear we're going to see many prosecutions. There's no new money for drug treatment. So what about that, smoke and mirrors? Why support it?
Well, I support it because I think, you know, we are having an epidemic of fentanyl ODs on our streets, and it is an obligation of the city's responsibility to our citizens to allow people to be dying on the street. The city council had two years, if not more, to actually get the funding to create a treatment infrastructure, and they woefully underperformed. They had the opportunity to go down to Olympia and advocate for a big pot of that pie that was included in the state bill, and they did not do so. So now we have, true, we do have limited resources. The next council, first priority has to be to advocate for more state monies through the opioid settlement money trust fund as well as federal monies. I think anybody whose life has been touched by addiction will tell you that intervention is necessary to get people to the, on the road to recovery, whether that's managing with methadone or Sublucade or actual full recovery and being sober, for now the time.
Kristiana, a related topic that came up in our last candidate event, this is about low-level drug dealers. People are dealing small amounts of drugs essentially to pay for their own addiction. Some harm reduction experts say arrests in that situation don't help people. What do you think?
I really don't think it does. I mean, I, you know, when I talk about how much I, I know that carceral approaches don't work, I, as a direct social service worker, have had to Narcan my clients. I have had clients die in my arms. I have found clients in bathtubs. I know what is happening out there. And before, it was fentanyl. It was heroin. Before heroin, it was meth. And what we really need and what we haven't had is an investment to scale of social service programs, and that's going to also have opportunities for those lower-level dealers to be able to have access to other locations, jobs, and things like that.
The seagull jumped in there. Kathy Moore, you could respond to that, but also the criticism that this new drug law, like any drug law, in some sense risks resurrecting the war on drugs, which failed, which disproportionately harmed people of color. How do you respond?
Well, I think it's very interesting that the Reverend Harriet Walden, who started Mothers for Police Accountability, was at both hearings and testified in favor of this law passing. So that, to me, says something about the crisis in the community. I too have been a social worker. I removed children from homes where their parents were unable to parent because they were addicted, seriously addicted to drugs. I'm aware of what it's like out on the streets. As a judge, I always tried to sentence people to an alternative if that was clear that drug addiction was what was moving the behavior forward. Those were successful. People came back to me and said, but for going through the criminal legal system and being mandated into treatment, I would be dead.
It's been, you know, a quick few minutes here, so we're midway through the dash. We just take a little breather. We take a little palate cleanser question. And you each have 15 seconds to answer on this one. If you have a free afternoon in District Five, if that is possible during your campaign, where do you like to spend it? How would you like to spend a free afternoon in District Five? Kathy Moore, we'll start with you.
Well, now with the redistricting of District Five, and we've gotten Carkeek Park, I would love to go to Carkeek Park and spend the afternoon on the beach, just being very calm and meditative.
Nice, a little bit of quiet.
Exactly.
Kristiana, where would you like to spend, or how would you like to spend a free afternoon in District Five?
If it's daytime, I would love to take my little dog Barkley, who's running for Doggy Delegate at D5, to the Sandal Park Playground down the street. And if it's at nighttime, I love the Shanghai Room or the Rikshaw.
Karaoke at the Rikshaw?
Yeah. I've had several birthday parties there.
We're going to have to have another debate with Barkley.
Do you have a pet to put up?
Okay, so we're going to move to one of the most important issues and always the top issue that voters want to hear candidates weigh in on, which is homelessness. Kathy Moore, you told KUW that you support Mayor Harrell's policy on homeless encampment removals. Right now, if encampments are classified as obstructions, they can be cleared without notice or offers of shelter and services. And obstruction sweeps constitute the majority of clearances, over 80% in 2022, according to reporting by Real Change. But over the summer, one of your former counterparts, a King County Superior Court judge, issued a summary judgment that said that these obstruction clearances were being used too broadly, removing tents were not actually, removing tents that were not actually blocking sidewalks or playgrounds. Do you agree that obstruction clearances are used too frequently in Seattle? And should the city be sweeping people without shelter options offered?
I don't think that the city should be, excuse me, sweeping people without outreach, offer of services, and offer of shelter. And, but the problem is that we don't have enough shelter capacity, and we have to greatly increase our shelter capacity. So that's shelters in and of themselves. It's also tiny house villages. I would also like to see pallet shelters set up. They're much faster to set up and build and locate than tiny house villages are. You know, this is, this is obviously a push and pull because we have tents that are obstructing sidewalks, are obstruction public use in parks and in greenways. And that, I would note that that opinion is being appealed. There are a number of jurisdictions up and down the West Coast that have appealed that because they feel that it has taken a tool away from municipalities to be able to deal with homelessness. Ultimately, we need to be more proactive. As soon as a tent shows up, we need to be doing the outreach at that point.
Kristiana Obi Sumner, you told KUW that you do not support Mayor Harrell's policy on encampment removals. How do you want the city to approach problem encampments near sensitive sites like schools? We have heard from parents who are worried about their kids walking past encampments because sometimes their kids are harassed or followed. Is there a role for clearances in this type of situation? What would you tell a parent in your district who is asking for help?
Yeah, so I think that is true. We don't have enough shelter spaces. I was privileged to be able to go to Nicholsville and see their eco-village model, which I think, not only that they say, and King County Regional Homelessness Authority say, that over 95% of folks who are currently outside would take the shelter at a tiny house village, but the shelters, emergency shelters themselves are scary for them too. And so if we need to, if we want to get folks off the street, we need to have those upstream solutions. And that's going to mean making sure that we fund that to scale as well as the staff who's going to make it run because they also are having an attrition at around a quarter to a third of their staff. For a family, for a community member who's concerned, I think what's really important here is not only to reach out to just your city council member, but to the local organizations. Again, they're working on these shoestring budgets. They're, the more that we can be able to help them to have the resources they need to help, as this policy and legislation is being put into place, get folks inside towards those referrals, the better we'll all be.
And just to be clear, is there a role for a clearance by the city ever in your platform?
I don't believe so, solely because they're just going to go down the street or across the block. That's their, a lot of times, it's folks who used to live in a community or things like that. So I don't see the, I think it's more harmful than beneficial.
Okay. Kathy Moore, we hear again and again, we've talked about it here, that there's not enough shelter. What is the new shelter that you would like to see more investment in, and where should it go?
So obviously, we need to, the long term is that we need to have permanent supportive housing, and we also need to have more affordable housing. We need to build more affordable housing. We need to keep people housed in the first place, so we need to utilize rent subsidies for that. And I would support using jumpstart tax for rent subsidies. We were very good during COVID at doing that. In the meantime, we do need to revamp our shelter capacity. The Regional Homelessness Authority has talked about how those shelters could, we could basically put cubicles in them so that people are given a sense of privacy, which is one of the reasons people are turning down shelter. In fact, shelter has had to be shut down because people are refusing to accept it. So we need to look at what are those obstacles? Can they bring in their pets? Can they bring in their partners?
Kristiana Obi Sumner, same question to you. We hear again and again, there's not enough shelter. What type of shelter do you want to see more investment in, and where will it go?
Again, being able to go to Nicholsville, it was amazing to be able to see, not only that that is the shelter they want, they have their own space, but they're also able to show ways that we can live in community, in an urban forest, and be able to have our environmental justice goals addressed as well. I had, when I started running, said that we should have that be where the Old Sam's Club is, but I did see that they are sort of developing that to be a green space. So, but I think that, you know, there are a lot of vacant lots, a lot of land, banking, things like that, where perhaps there are some places where we could have that tiny home village and be able to expand that model to all housing in Seattle.
Kristiana, staying with you, there's a severe housing shortage in Seattle and the region. KUW asked the candidates how important it was for the city to encourage the construction of more market rate housing. You said very important. KUW has also heard from some D5 residents who say, ah, the pace of change has been too fast. There's all this traffic. There's other growth-related concerns. So what's your message about saying, hey, it's very important for us to build more housing, kind of in that context of some uneasiness with it?
I would say the number one thing that my consulting firm does in organizational development is change management and leadership. Humans, it's really hard for humans to hold change, right? You know, it's just, it's, even if it's positive, because it's, it's hard to have to get into a new groove, and you're afraid, and it's a deep dark, and especially if there's opportunities where it could be, you know, fail. There's a lot of those reasons. And I, what I would bring is a toolkit that I've already had success with, with over 250 businesses and organizations across the country, that there is ways that we can hold that multiple pathways toward shared goals. Yes, holding space that, our neighborhood's going to look a little different, but wouldn't it be great to have more neighbors, more kids trick-or-treating at Halloween, right? More dogs to play with at the park, you know, more opportunities for us to build a community. But it's going to take all of us holding space. And so as we are building more affordable housing, accessible housing, family housing, housing that you can actually afford, not making over $100,000, I think we will be able to achieve that goal.
Kathy Moore, same topic. You told KUW it's somewhat important that the city encourage the construction of more market rate housing. So not very important, you said somewhat important. But King County estimates Seattle's going to need over 100,000 new homes over the next 20 years, and housing prices are already out of reach for a lot of folks. So why only somewhat important, and what do you think the city should be doing differently, if anything?
So, you know, the key there is market rate housing. Market rate housing, in my opinion, is going to come. I don't think that the government necessarily needs to be involved other than getting out of the way in terms of streamlining, permitting, dealing with the sort of bureaucratic obstacles that get in the way and add additional costs to building projects. And we certainly get an earful of that from developers. Where I think the city does absolutely need to be involved is in building significant amounts of affordable housing, and that, so that's permanent supporting, zero to 30, and then the, really, the market, excuse me, the workforce housing, which is 50 to 60% of AMI. Then you look at the statistics, that's where the greatest need is for our, you know, our nurses, our police, our teachers, daycare workers, all of those people that we want to remain in the city. So the city, we need to be looking at how do we mandate a certain amount of onsite affordable housing? How do we maybe extend the multifamily tax exemption credit to require 50 years of affordability rather than 12 years of affordability? And we need to be talking to our neighbors about what are our common shared goals? We want people...
Very horrible offender.
That fairy comes in. It's, yeah, it's tough.
Kristiana, where's all that housing going to go? Some folks in District Five say some of it could go at the Jackson Park Golf Course. The question is, should it remain a golf course? If not, what do you think ought to go there?
I think what's interesting about Jackson Park is that it's supposed to be a public park, but you have to pay to go to the golf course part of the public park. And I, you know, I'm of the mindset of either we should have this be open to everyone without paying, or we should have the opportunity to use that space. But really, at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're increasing housing and we are innovating ways that we can do that while also increasing our tree canopy and addressing our climate disaster that we're going through here and throughout the country.
So maybe housing?
Maybe. I would love to, I would love to explore it, but what it would look like, you know, really, if you, they talk about, like, you know, a park lane has to be replaced with equal or greater value, what would be equal greater value than housing?
Kathy Moore, same question. Should Jackson Park remain a golf course? If not, what should go there?
So at the moment, there isn't a law in place that says that it can't be converted to anything other than equal use. So that would mean that there would, we would either have to repeal that. There would be a lot of litigation involved if we were going to put housing in Jackson Park. But I think Kristiana and I both attended a forum where we were talking about maybe we could turn it completely into park space. Soon after that, I got an earful from people who do utilize the golf course. So this is going to be a tricky issue. We need a lot more green space in D5. It is an equity issue, but we're going to have to bring everybody together to figure out how we can move forward on that issue.
Let's talk about rent control. Kathy Moore, you told KUW that you were not in favor of city council member Shama Sawant's rent control proposal, which would have capped residential rent hikes at the rate of inflation without exception for building type. We should note that this ordinance failed, and it would have kicked in only if the state law banning rent control policies were to change. Why did you not support Sawant's proposal? And what alternate ideas do you have to stop longtime residents of District Five from being priced out?
Oh, I didn't support it because it seemed to me a phantom bill. I, right now, rent control is preempted by the state. I don't see that, I don't see that law changing anytime soon. So it seemed performative, quite frankly. I think, and as I mentioned earlier, what we need to do is keep people housed. We need to be utilizing rent subsidies much more frequently. We need to be doing a better job of connecting people to the knowledge that they are eligible for rent subsidies. We need to be working with small landlords who have a lot of vacant space that is affordable, perhaps creating some sort of directory where we can connect people who are in need of more affordable housing. Ultimately, we do need to build more housing, and we need to build more affordable housing, as I mentioned before. The idea that we are, you know, it's going to take 40 years of housing supply to actually get to where we're going to have naturally affordable housing. We don't have 40 years to wait. We've got to do something right now. So my main thing is let's find ways that we can keep people housed by providing them the support that they need.
Kristiana Obi Sumner, you told KUW you were in favor of council member Sawant's rent control proposal. Critics pointed out that the policy lacked carve-outs for new construction, and that could dampen development and lead to fewer new units of housing being built. A state-level proposal, which also failed, but it would have included exemptions for new buildings. With that in mind, why did you support the Sawant rent control plan?
You know, it wasn't, you're going to hear me, I guess, I'm just going to say. So it wasn't necessarily the content of it, right? But we, there are several things that the city has tried to put these equity measures and progress measures in place, that there's this, like, state bill or state law that is preventing us from doing that. As a city council member, my purview doesn't end where my, my responsibility doesn't end where my purview ends. That's what I'm trying to say. my purview ends, is what I'm trying to say. And so like, I've said this about the taxes, you know, the progressive stabilization revenue task force, that they said, oh, maybe we can have an income tax, but it has to be a 1% flat tax. That's gonna be more regressive, in the most regressive tax structure in the country. We would need to do something similarly. Sure, it may not, you know, necessarily like go into place right away, but you advocate and you network with all of the people who, at different sort of levels, especially those who might have endorsed you, and you find ways to move that upstream. And sometimes, just that show of passing a bill like that can say, listen, we need you to act and help us out.
Kathy Moore, you said that you felt that the Sawant legislation was performative. Is there a form of rent control that you could get behind, a shape of a bill, a different type of policy that you could get behind?
Well, I mean, we basically have a form of rent control with the multifamily tax exemption credit right now. Landlord, excuse me, developers are given a 12-year hiatus on property tax if they keep rents affordable. So, you know, I think that that is something that, again, that's a program that I would like to expand to a 50-year timeframe, which is the timeframe that nonprofit developers are required to utilize. So if it were something like that, certainly I would consider it. But you know what? The devil is in the details. To me, the, it's not worth fighting about something that's theoretical, or that we've got to go down to Olympia and add yet another thing to our legislative agenda. We've got to focus on what we can do now. The best thing that we can do now is put money in people's pockets.
Kristiana, how do you keep rent control, rent stabilization policies from dampening new development?
I think that we really, what we need to look at is the rent stabilization. I mean, what's important here, I think, is, and this is what I do every day in my job, anything that has, anything that might forge us forward and go break through barriers that we haven't been able to break through might feel theoretical because we haven't done it, but we will never move forward unless we take the chance to do so. So if we want to see affordable housing, if we want to make sure that we can have new developments that are not just going to be affordable, but also have space to grow and have a family, we have very few 200 degree room apartments. We need to do something innovative.
Lightning round. There's a lightning round.
The ferry captain's signaling, it's time for the lightning round. We were talking a minute ago, actually, here about the fact that Seattle's forecasting big budget deficits starting in 2025, $200 million plus. It's a lot. A work group recently suggested new taxes might fill the gap. So this is a yes or no thing for this one. Kristiana, yes or no on the high-paid CEO ratio tax?
Yes.
Yes.
City-level capital gains tax?
Yes.
Yes.
Tax on vacant property?
Yes.
Maybe.
And a traffic congestion tax?
Maybe.
Maybe.
All right. This one about Jump Start, would you be open to expanding the number of companies the Jump Start tax applies to? Kristiana?
Okay, see it again.
Sorry. Would you be open to expanding the number of companies that the Jump Start tax applies to, essentially by lowering the payroll threshold?
I would like to expand the companies, the payroll threshold. It's a different, maybe.
No.
All right, and this is a sports question.
Oh, come on, no.
I had to say that. Rain or storm? Kristiana?
Storm.
Rain.
All right, there you go. All right, and this one, political. How did you vote in the 2021 mayor's race, Bruce Harrell versus former city councilmember Lorena Gonzalez? Kristiana?
Lorena Gonzalez.
I'm not going to answer that. This is a private, the ballot is private, and I want it to remain so.
Okay, and then I'm just gonna ask this one, too. Who did you vote for in the 2021 city attorney's race? Kristiana?
NTK.
Same answer.
All right. And last question, you're meeting someone on Greenwood Ave in District 5 for lunch. Are you having falafel or a burger?
If I'm with my husband, I'm gonna be forced to have a burger, but I would prefer a falafel.
Falafel.
All right. Time for candidate closing statements. One minute each. We flipped a coin ahead of time, and Kathy Moore, you'll go first.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. So the reason that I'm running for this seat is that I have spent the past 30 years of my life dedicated to public service. I have worked in the criminal legal system, the behavioral health system, the social welfare system. You know, as a frontline worker, as well as a judge, I am very much committed to, I understand the intersection of those issues, and they are issues that are forefront for our city that we have to get right. And I want to bring that experience and commitment to making this a city that works for everyone. I have three grown children. I am deeply committed to this being a city where they want to live, and that means it needs to be a city that's equitable, because that's incredibly important to them, as well as to me. I have a large number of endorsements from the mayor, from Dal Constantine, from firefighters, lots of organized labor, a lot of electives who believe that I can get the job done. Thank you.
And Kristiana Obi Sumner, you get the last word.
As you heard me talk about, I started my social equity consulting business in 2018 as a multiply-disabled person who was fighting within my union for increased equity and social justice in the workplace. And we have started to work with over 250 businesses, governments, and organizations across the country. Why that's important? Because a lot of them are government departments at the city, county, and state level. Not only have I been behind the scenes in a policy strategy in theory of putting forth some of the most important bills that we've been able to have in the last five years, but also being able to do so directly as co-chair of Disabilities Commission and being able to pass the nation's first ban on subminimum wage. But on top of that, I also am a renter. I have to work 40 hours a week because I don't know what a savings account is, apparently. And I want to make sure that folks know that District 5 is way more diverse than what people expect it to be, and we're growing every day. And we, what is really important for me is that we go, get to a space where we truly have social equity, to be an equitable society with each other. And that's going to take change, that's gonna take risk, that's gonna take collective action. And I have a track record of success with that.
Thank you to Kristiana Obi Sumner and Kathy Moore, your candidates for District 5 on the Seattle City Council. And you can hear all of our district dashes on the Soundside Podcast, and look for David Hyde's reporting on kuw.org. For David Hyde, I'm Libby Dankman. Happy voting, everybody.